Alrighty. Thank you.
Hey Greg.
Hi Ed.
Hi Ed. Alright, you have a quorum Christine. I don't know, did you hear from Carolyn or Cindy?
Cindy is joining. It's her first Zoom, so it might take her a moment to figure out how to log on. And I did direct Carolyn to the email, but she can't find it, so I screenshotted it and told her to just call in. So it might be a moment, but if you don't mind waiting.
We're good. We're hoping everyone is doing well.
Everyone's well on my end.
Way of craziness.
Good?
Crazy, totally crazy.
New norm?
I guess.
Yeah. I'm probably one of the most technologically illiterate people there is, so learning how to Zoom is different.
I'm there. Poor Greg is surrounded by us.
I know, poor Greg.
We are managing.
I'm considering this job embedded professional development that, you know, we're figuring it out because we have to, right?
Yes. I'm logging my hours of trying to learn it, so.
Yes, well, it's a good use of time.
We're remotely teaching preschool. Four classes a week. It's funny to watch the kids on Google Meets. They're like waving to each other the whole time.
Yeah, that's great.
Both Greg and I are discovering that it's a lot more fun and exhilarating supporting a workforce scattered to the four winds.
It is a different challenge for sure.
I'm not sure Greg has called it fun even once.
Teaching in the morning and myself with three at home and then also supporting this organization, so it's very interesting.
I guess we'll start.
Yeah.
So Erin, are you actually in the...
Unless someone's waiting.
Are you in the junior high school? It looks like, or is that...
Me? Yeah, no, Greg's in his office. I'm in the, yeah, in the conference room and Deb's in her office.
Oh, okay. My agency, not even the commissioner is in headquarters. Any trip to the headquarters requires commissioner level approval at this point.
No, we have a scattered schedule here with appropriate... You can tell we're in three separate offices, so we don't meet. And then the custodians will be here at 6:00 AM tomorrow to, they know what areas we're in, to wipe down everything all behind us, so.
Yep, we're scattered and even the bookkeepers will come in usually at least once a week because they're not able to produce payroll and checks remotely, so.
Wow, alright.
Keeping distance and keeping things going.
Nobody is in the waiting room, Erin. If anybody pops, then I'll let the group know.
Alright.
Alright, then. And Karen, I will introduce Karen.
Yes.
Karen Marecki does minutes for a couple of our other schools. So, and we just before this meeting had a Brimfield meeting and she usually does those minutes. So when we invited her to join Brimfield and give her the opportunity to keep taking virtual minutes, we did offer for her to join us for this one time anyway to try and help out and take notes as we field through this. So Karen, welcome. And she'll kind of work through the minutes and the template will probably look very much like what we just did in Brimfield because the agenda is the same. So what we did there Christine was just open up the regular meeting right into the full public hearing that we're just making part of this regular meeting.
Okay. Alright, so I will call the Will School Committee budget meeting to order. It's 6:09, right? And it's April 15th, it would be tax day.
Awesome. So I will just remind you all where we were when we last met because not a lot has changed since then. We had a budget in January that came out, over 10% increase. We made some tough decisions in February that brought that figure down to still a 7% increase, which is pretty hefty, but all involved in the town are aware of that. Selectment as well as finance committee are aware where we're at in the decisions that we've made so far. I will just kind of high level, for those of you who have peeked at the, we've already posted all the budget documents online, which we do every year. We did it a little early this year and the little kind of analysis is just to remind everyone, the document with the pie charts does show that we continue, you know, the 65% of the budget is in the core education 1,000 series, which is, the 2,000 series, which is the meat and potato. That's down a little bit, that's down about a percent because of these outside costs that are really driving this budget. Seventy-five, 72% of the total budget is salary, which you would expect in a service industry. And of that 75% is in instruction. And then on the third page, there were some charts showing historically what our budgets and enrollment had been. And that's, we all know, this is when things got alarming, that our budget was 4% last year, 2% the year before, but spiking up to seven while enrollment is declining, which is quite concerning. Then we broke out school choice, again declining enrollment as well as overall. But the budget drivers really are about our special needs population and the out of district tuitions that are up 200% due to the four new placements. You all know this, we've heard this, we've talked about it so many times between the tuitions and the transportation. We're just, you know, we're in a tough spot, but otherwise, there's not anything significant going on in the budget. And we did reduce already in a few areas and squeeze where we could. I did not see any other questions online. We gave the opportunity to email a question. We didn't get any. I didn't get any more questions in the last month and a half from any of you or even any of your town public figures. They're all well aware of what's going on and what we'd likely be voting tonight, and I've shared those figures also.
I have a high level question, if I may.
Yeah.
The emergency, I mean, what does that blow up in our face, not just for this year, but, you know, cleaning up next year? I mean, I know there's a lot of known and unknowns there, but...
There are far more unknowns than not a single known at this point in time. This is what I can say for this year. For next year, all bets are off. I think until the state figures out where on the dartboard they're going to throw their dot to try and guess how slow revenue will recover, that unfortunately, we are all waiting for the state to figure out what they want to put their budget as before we can decide how much trouble we might be in.
Okay. Now, given my... You have a follow-up question?
Can I, let me finish first because I think I can answer some of the first question. I haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
For the current year budget, just reminding folks who don't know, there won't be a heck of a lot of savings because we are still paying all of our staff. We are paying our teachers and our classroom assistants who are still working. We are paying our custodians who are still cleaning. We are paying our cafeteria workers who are still serving food to, in a totally different model, but are serving. So we will not see any current year savings in your budget for salaries. What you will probably see is maybe a little bit of utility savings. So we'll have to see when we get there. We're not going to see savings in supplies because you all know the teaching supplies are bought at the beginning of the year. And we're using maybe a little bit more than we would right now to copy packets and send home. We have not yet incurred a significant amount of custodial cleaning supplies because we closed. Were we still open and every day running through the entire building, we would have more supply costs. But what we did just about when we closed and did that thorough cleaning is use pretty much what we had in inventory. So going forward, we'll track and see if we use more. That means we incurred more because of this crisis. But right now, in my opinion, our current year budget, I don't think has incurred much of anything additionally. The one other little area that you will see a little savings in is transportation. Because we're not completely saving. It certainly came out of one of the federal government's initial packets and recommendations and requests, which is to continue paying your transportation vendors and bus drivers. What we did for our special ed staff and our Sturbridge staff is they also are doing PD, professional development online. They are cleaning the buses. They are starting them regularly to make sure they're still going and doing some work things. When I talked to John McCarthy, I was assured he's doing the same thing because I was not going to negotiate to continue paying the vendor even though the government suggested if he was laying off his people, which he did not. So that being said however, I did discuss with him, well, I wanted to support and it was an agreement. We want to keep folks from being in the unemployment line as long as we could, but we're clearly not incurring the cost of gasoline right now. So what I did negotiate with McCarthy was a lower, a reduction of about 15 to 20% lower than the normal monthly transportation bill. So we'll be paying for the staffing and the overall administrative costs to keep him afloat, but we'll have a savings from gasoline. So at the end of the year, you will see a positive balance in that line item. That all being said, we all know we had a whole lot of other problems in this budget. And we were borrowing from Peter and Paul to pay Mary this year. So while normally I would say there'll be a balance to turn back to the town in those line items, we'll have to look at it in June and see what else that we might be able to do and actually pay our bills and have that conversation. So I'd like to turn something back to the town, but we have to remember we have four out of district tuitions that we've been absorbing the cost for already and charging to school choice or to grants or the special ed grant. So I'm not quite there to say for sure, but there's a chance that we should have a few line items that if we have balances, we could give a few bucks back to the town.
Okay. The question that might make my previous question, do you anticipate that once the dust settles and, you know, the state gives guidance, obviously, you know, possibly quite far past town meeting, which I have no idea if it's happening. Do you feel confident that in the fall, towns will be allowed to, and districts will be allowed to adjust their budgets?
I have no confidence of anything after July 1st. This is a total uncharted territory. The legislators are still trying to figure out what to do across the state. If there's no state budget or if there are no town budgets by July 1st, does that put us in a 1/12? We've never been there before, so I can't, I'm not going to be Chicken Little with the sky falling in, but there's going to be some significant problems across the state and it's going to take years to level back up. I, we just, we clearly, no one has any answers yet and no one said, okay. Not knowing what's going to happen, I'm going to at least say, here's my crystal ball and this is what I decide I'm going to go with for guesses. Until that happens, I don't know. Legislation is changing daily. Waivers are happening daily. So right now, is there a legal way to, there's a legal way to cut a state budget in the middle of the year. It's called 9C cuts. And 9C cuts have always in the past rolled down to the potential of any department or school budget being cut. So, you know, I think we certainly could be in that world.
Well, I mean, not just cut, one might have to cut, one might have to add. So essentially...
Yeah, people could go the other way and decide that our budget's going to be cut by 50% because we think things are going to be that dramatic and then put something back in. I don't know.
I'm just trying to understand, you know, what are the steps we're taking, you know, can't be undone versus, you know, revised later, you know?
All guidance we have right now is just to move forward by the rules that we know. So we're trying to take votes and say, based on what we know, once we get out of this public hearing, I'm going to go to the regular, I'm going to make a recommendation that you vote this number, which has been shared with all of your folks already anyway, the stuff and as well as finance. And then they have to decide what they're comfortable building a budget. But yeah, in any given year, you can vote a budget and then you can turn around and say, we simply have to cut things. And you come together and you have a town meeting and vote a different budget. Or if you get more money, you can put in articles increases, but I think that, yeah, I think your state legislators are going to give a ton of guidance on this over the next month or two.
Okay, so we're going forward. So today, what we're doing today, if I understand, we're going to go forward as if life were normal.
Yep. Once you close this session, I'm going to go into regular session and recommend you vote this figure to send to the town and that is our request as of now.
Okay, but if our needs, if our funding needs next fall to pick up the pieces, turns out, oh, you know, we gotta, I mean, obviously, you know, we'll have to do something supplemental, right?
Well, no, Ed. I mean, I certainly don't see us, but if a miracle happened and this budget was passed, I would certainly not be going back in the fall and saying, we need more to do something because we're already taxing the town so much. I don't think the town's going to be able to pay. I think it's more likely going to be the other way around, that they will come back and say, we can't support this budget.
Oh, no, I'm not talking, well, no, you're absolutely correct there, but, you know, I'm thinking if, you know, if sources of money from the state or the federal government were to allow.
Sure. If all of a sudden money started falling from the sky and the feds sent to tie more money, absolutely. I would think that, what that would look like would probably be in the form of an article requested at a town meeting, a special town meeting.
Okay, alright.
I think Christine, all you need to do is kind of formally close the public hearing. The regular meeting will make the recommendation.
Okay, so hearing that, I'll be closing the town budget meeting and we'll be opening our regular school committee meeting.
Okay, so what I recommend at this point is that the committee vote the figure of 1,883,724 for the fiscal 21 request to the town.
So moved.
I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That at least gets you formally voting where we were. And, you know, I'll make sure folks know we turned that vote officially so that at least we wouldn't be in trouble on a technicality. And we'll keep you all posted.
Okay. Thank you. The next item, just on our agenda, I didn't know if people have it, if they were able to get it, is just the school choice numbers. We do need to vote those, so Linda has some recommendations as far as what we typically do is the kind of up to numbers for each grade.
Yes, so going up to 18. For grade one, we have three openings. For grade two, we have five. And for grade three, we have four. At this point, just to let you know, we have 11 in preschool and I also got five from the census, I'm sorry. So we're up to 16 of the ones we know about. In history has shown there's always more. So that's my kindergarten number, so I'm thinking we either put that on pause like we did last year and see how it plays out. And I do have two applications for kindergarten right now at this moment, and then I have one application for grade two. But I think that, just to be on the safe side, if we put a hold on the kindergarten votes until, I think we did it in...
We do. We usually only do grades one to six for now. Yep.
Now, I know you, we've talked about, and I don't know if it's, Erin, if this is a district thing, but my current grade three is 13. Do we want to open grade four?
Do you have any applicants?
I don't. I don't.
So the rushes, I mean, that might be something that we think about for next month. I don't know how people feel about that. I think we usually take them, one to three, but I can see your point of saying, especially if a child's going to be with us for grades four, five, six, going up. They would be, they would fall into that new regulation, which means theoretically, they'd have to apply for the seventh grade lottery. So that would have to be clear that any new applicants, should you get them, and right now it is kind of a moot point because we don't even have any. But maybe we can hold off till May and have people kind of digest that thought. With 13, if we were to get one or two applicants, how would people feel about that?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ed, did you have a question or something?
No, I was just, I was just saying, you know, just thinking. You know, if, you know, you know, you know, if there's, you know, people have to even know that it's possible before they even, you know, express interest.
For what?
For fourth grade applications. I just see it as a bit of a shame to pass up the opportunity, you know, we're so stressed in terms of our enrollment. I just wanted, you know, what would be the harm in saying, oh, okay, well, you know, if an applicant or two comes in, we'll take it, we'll take it. You know, given the provisos, you know, given that we communicate the issue about the, about task entry.
Well, that's up, I mean, that's up to the committee. You guys heard the number. Grade three is, you know, incredibly small, so, you know, I'll leave that to you.
I mean, if either of you members feel the same way, I'll offer a motion to allow it.
Don't you think we should wait a little bit to see if other students roll in that are actually residents first before we jump into that?
Well, that would be the same, that would be, on that argument, we would be pausing all grades.
But we don't typically accept school choice for four, five, and six, do we?
Yeah, but...
No, we haven't over the past years.
I actually think we've gone through four. I think we have, I think if they've had three, the old school, it was if they were with us for three years.
Yeah, that was the old school. Yep.
I think we did do four. We definitely held the line at five and six.
But now with the provision, if they're enrolled four, five, and six, they can enter the lottery for the junior high.
That's correct.
On a guaranteed spot.
That is correct.
So we don't want to give false hope.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, but we can just tell them, look, have your eyes wide open about this.
I think we could probably table it until the May meeting, just to see where our numbers really are at. See how this plays out with what we're going through for a little bit longer.
And if Linda gets, you know, five applicants over the next week or something for grade three, she can certainly reach out to us and maybe we can give her some talking points of, you know, it seems like the feeling that I'm getting is that if we had the spots, it would be okay, but, you know, we'll wait, you know, till May for kind of the formal vote. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Alright.
Alright, so Linda, just to recap, so there's nothing on K, we're going to wait. And quite frankly, it sounds like we might actually be where we are, if you're at 16 kind of definitive already, correct?
Right, right, yeah.
I am interested. I think we did get our OSA numbers, preliminary. Deb, remind me of that. Did we get those? We asked...
I'll have to look. I'm going to look in here and see.
No, that's okay, because I do think just from new kindergarteners' perspective, that's all, to see if those...
Let me peel through while we're talking.
Okay, and then you...
All of them.
But we said up to three spots for grade one, up to five in grade two, and four in grade three. Is that right, Linda?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that Cindy?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm just not sure that we let Karen know. That Karen, that is Cindy Lena that joined us.
Yes, I was a little late, but I did join.
That's okay. We knew you were coming.
Thank you. Great. So do you want to make that motion, Christine or someone, to accept those numbers?
Yes, I would.
As presented?
Yeah, I will make that motion for the school choice numbers as presented. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the next one was the remote learning plan. Just real briefly, I know you all received it either as a parent or I had forwarded it to you all. Really want to thank everybody, every staff member, all members of leadership team, administration, every single staff and faculty for working really, really hard to get this program up and running. You know, I say we're trying to take an institutional organization that was not really developed with the goal of fully becoming a remote organization, and yet we, I think, were able to do it. Just a reminder on the timeline that when school was canceled that weekend of March 13th, we had canceled it initially. And then the 15th, the governor did, we were asked to provide enrichment opportunities for students just so there really wouldn't be regression, just to keep them connected to school, which we did. And I again thank all the teachers and staff and faculty for pulling that together and administration. And then when that changed to make fourth, we were asked to give a little bit more structure, if you will, to the day. And we were able to do that with the commissioner's guidelines. Very proud of the work that we did. He was clear to say that remote learning is not online. It is not a full online platform. That's not the intent, recognizing all the limitations to that, not the least of which is access as well as having adult supervision at home for students. Students can have parents who are either working at home, parents who are working outside of the school, excuse me, outside of the home in their typical office or workspace, and then being in charge of delivering some level of support to students when they get instruction from school. It's just, it's a tall order, to say the least. So understanding that it needed flexibility, the commissioner, I thought, gave really great guidance. And the elementary principals met together. We all met, not in person, virtually. And we talked about what that plan would look like. So I'm happy to see if Linda, you want to add anything or if anybody has questions about how we got to where we got, how we're doing. And then we all know it's just as it is for budget. It's a big unknown as to whether we'll remain in this model as May 5th, whether May 5th will be the happy day that we all come back. It's truly hard to tell. I suspect, I have no insider information, but I suspect that the governor will give us some lead time beyond three days or two. You know, I suspect we're going to know likely next week, but again, I don't know the governor and he isn't communicating with me, but that's sort of my feeling anyways, so. Linda?
Yeah, I'll just add a couple of things that echo what Dr. Nozick is saying about the incredible work that the staff is doing. But I have to say, and I think a few of us had just joined on, those of us that were not technology, you know, very good at it, it seems that we're all of a sudden, we're doing Zoom meetings, we're doing hangouts, we are just becoming, and this is true for the staff and students and people that didn't think that they had it in them. They're stepping up and they're trying new things. And I think, you know, to some extent, it wasn't such a bad thing, you know, they're learning all these new tools that they have to do to try to make things work. So I feel like every parent has been communicated with by the teachers and then also myself. I'm about three quarters of the way through the school, trying to just communicate with everybody, make sure they have what they need, if there's anything else that we can do to support them. Karen shared some of the modalities as, you know, hard cut... Shared some of the modalities, is, you know, hard copy packets, some are doing Google Classroom, some are doing Zoom meetings, so it is taking a variety of structure, but it's, it's, it's getting done and they're doing a phenomenal job.
I was wondering what, what the online experience, the interactions were looking like for the, for the youngest grades? Just little anecdotes or something?
Yeah, you know, the little ones, I know, for example, my first grade teacher, she can only have a maximum of three, because they don't understand about the noise level, and like, one of the kids had an E-strike, and he kept hitting it and hitting it, and so nobody could hear what the other child was trying to say, so it's just trying to get sort of that understanding of, of, of protocol, if you will, for online, for the little ones. But just seeing the teacher's faces, the parents are really happy with that, the kids are really happy to see the teacher, and then they can see each other too. So it's just, it's been really, really good.
Sorry, you heard the three pit bulls barking there for a moment.
Can I? If, if we're done talking about the actual learning plan, any other questions on that? Okay, I just wanted to take a second to update you all on what's been happening with, with the cafeteria staff and food, food bags, just for those who don't know. I mean, week one, we started the process, we reached out to all across the district, all families immediately who qualified for free and reduced lunch to see who, who was in need for us to serve them somehow, and that's been the core base we've been working with. What we're doing is every Monday, we're actually putting bags together up here at the high school, so preparing the meals and bags here for the week, so each bag actually has 10 meals in it, five breakfasts and five lunches that the staff here is putting together, and then the elementary staff is picking up all the bags and deploying them out to the elementary schools. So even the Tantascwa families are picking up at the elementary school, where it's more convenient for them in their, in their hometown. So I just wanted you folks to know that usually somewhere between 15 and 20 bags, at least, every Monday are being deployed from Wales Elementary at this point. If something else comes up, anyone reaches out to the principal and all of a sudden, they are in a place where they need some help, we just add them to the list. In the beginning, when we did this, we were not sure we were going to get any reimbursement at all. We just knew it was the right thing to do. In the meantime, they have voted some waivers that we are going to get reimbursed for all of these meals at the free rate, which is awesome. But it's certainly not near what we have been getting before for revenue. So ultimately, we are still paying your cafeteria staff, they are they're doing professional development or doing these deliveries. This week, we're doing another delivery on Friday to get folks through the holiday weekend, because we don't want any of our staff working on Monday. And then next Tuesday, we'll push out another bag for the rest of the week, so sort of a heads up is, we're paying our staff, it's the right thing to do, they're working, they're happy to be doing things, but the revenue coming in is not near enough to cover the staffing, so we'll be watching your revolving fund by the end of the year and hoping it doesn't dip into the hole. The good news is, you all know, we had put some changes in place and, and, and they really helped a lot last year, and I expected to really feel the benefit this year. But also, we started off the year with a positive balance in the revolving fund, so hopefully, we're just going to chew that up and not end up in the negative. If we end up in the negative, I could come back to you and say we might need to vote a little bit more money from school choice to clear that revolving fund, because legally, we need to keep it in the black or even. But I thought the right thing is to do is to keep giving these kids and families as much assistance as we can. And, and that is our plan, unless we hear differently from you folks.
No, that's great.
I think it's great.
All right. I did just, now I'm back, I'm going backwards, I did finally, Erin, find the list of OSVs new, and Wales actually didn't have any new kindergarteners polled.
Awesome.
So they'll continue to have eight, eight kids, which is a lot proportionately, but no new ones, so no added ones coming in.
Good news.
And I guess that's it for that agenda item.
Okay.
There was one item that I apologize, didn't make the agenda, we talked about it in January and February, and that was the Student Opportunity Act Plan, which again, I, I long for the days where that was something I worried about. It just kind of, at this point, because if you recall from the two months talking there, the premise was, how are we going to spend all this new chapter 70 money? Which, of course, we only received 15,000 and change anyways to Wales. But more importantly, we, as Deb said again, it's, the future is truly unknown regarding state revenue and what we're going to get for, for support of our budget, but we do need to, at this point, these are due May 15th, so we would need this vote tonight, if you're okay with the plan as presented, and I'm happy to go over it, I did email it to all of you. But it's nothing different than, again, what we had talked about in January and February, really, where we gave that public input opportunity for that. So whether there is or isn't money, the target area we are focusing on, which is one of the identified need areas per the state, is on the early literacy instruction, and you can see this is going to continue to support reading wonders or foundations, as well as some professional development. And then our additional breakout or area is supporting the holistic needs of students. So we put in there what the School Adjustment Counselor and Psychologist Services would equal for next year. Again, looking to continue to support student needs at that level in the building, so if you're okay with the plan as presented.
Madam Chair, I offer a motion to approve this plan as presented?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much. And I think that was it from me, other than a big thank you to you all as a school committee and all our school committees. Having this whole sort of craziness right now is honestly complicated by our structure, but with six school committees and 36 people, it's been remarkable, the support we've received, so that we can help support the teachers, parents, everyone in the buildings to help support our students, even in a, in a unique situation, so I personally and professionally really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for everything that all of you do. Especially the Technology Department. Greg and Mike at Burgess, I know that was, I see all the discussions every day, so it's a huge task, and I, I thank you all for everything that you're doing for all of our families and students and staff members.
You're welcome.
To one little side note, if you haven't gone by the school, take a look at the tulips that are popping up. The kids planned with them last fall, and they're all coming up on the sides. It's awesome, you gotta go buy them, look.
No. It looks beautiful.
All right. Anything else?
Just sort of the open forum thing, Erin, I mean, I, you know, we know, just like the future as far as revenues are have you gotten, given any thought about in a big picture, you know, you know, what we do if we, you know, finish school this, you know, if we convene this physical school at all, or don't, or, you know, how how are we going to pick up the pieces?
Well, I, I personally think that the, the biggest goal, if you will, of the work we've done up till now, it is certainly academic in nature, the curriculum work, but right now, we're still kind of enhancing our mastery, the good news, bad news around having MCAS, which as you, I believe you know, has been canceled, but I will, I will forward that information to you for the year, the commissioner was able to, to cancel that for this year. The, the bigger issue is really the connectivity that kids have to school, and that's our, honestly, a very, very large concern, so I think as we transition back, we look to see what the needs are of our students, some kids will be able to transition back as if it was just the summer. Some will need a lot more support to get back in, to your point, Ed, is it six weeks, is it four weeks, is it two weeks, you know? And we really don't know, so we're going to have to take that as it is. I do know that teachers remaining connected to the students will certainly help the transition as they come back, but what it will look like will be us just welcoming with open arms our students back, everybody is looking forward to that day. And then seeing what, what the kids present as, and, and take it from there, just as we do, honestly, when we start every year, dare I say, every Monday, when kids come in, we just we see where they are, we take them where they are, and we look forward to supporting them and moving them forward, so.
And then the other, just real follow up, and this is probably sort of rhetorical, you know, you know, a lot, you know, a lot of scientists say we may be seeing several waves, there could be rolling, you know, you know, we could go in and out of this over the next year. You know, and that couples in my mind with the question, what changes permanently, you know, with our our, our new learned habits and skills and skill sets?
Yeah, I mean, all of those are really valid questions. I, I think the more time we have to think about those or, or seek public health guidance or other scientific data, will, it will inform, there is no doubt, it will inform how we do business, but what that looks like, I, I can't tell you, but I, I suspect there will be a lot of lessons or or new information coming forward that we'll have to consider.
All right.
All right, thank you.
I know, thank you for all the information. Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, motion to close the meeting?
Awesome.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Our, our next meeting is May 20th, so we will wonderfully, hopefully, fingers crossed, be in person.
Is that, is that, is that the, is that the town meeting date as well?
Yep.
Correct, yep.
Yep.
That, by the way, you know, you know, we may want to, you know, we may want to consider, well, I mean, do nothing until we know whether or not there was even going to be a town meeting on that date, but I've, I've, over in previous years, assuming we're even doing that, having a school committee meeting, you know, at, at 6 o'clock, right before a town meeting at 7, you know, we always, you know, us members can find ourselves, you know, squeezed between that. You might want to just consider starting a little earlier.
Sure. Well, I mean, depending on what's on the agenda, so
Right.
That's when, you know, if this
Okay.
Often, we've done it earlier, if there's something hearty of a budget discussion, other times we're done at 6:20 and twiddling your thumbs until 7, so.
Okay. But if it it looks like a squeeze, think about it.
Yep.
And that actually reminds me, actually, one thing I didn't update you on is negotiations, I know I had emailed you saying that, that was kind of on hold, I think that's still going to be on hold, but as we move towards the next few weeks and we get a little more information hopefully about what the rest of the school year looks like, certainly be in touch over.
Who's signing warrants?
Christine, when needed, however, most, the most recent batch, actually, all accountants across the district have come to accept virtual okay to pay, so whenever we, we have been scanning warrants and sending them to the town hall, and Christine has then been reviewing the scans and sending a virtual okay to pay.
Okay, so, so at some point, the committee, the committee authorized one, one signatory for everything?
Oh, yeah, that happened a couple of years ago.
Okay.
All right.
Well, all take care.
Stay safe and healthy.
Yeah, stay well.
Formally vote to return?
We did, everyone.
All right, take care all.
Thank you.
Stay safe, stay well. Bye.
Bye bye.